All right, clock on the wall tells us that it's time to begin the meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order of the Stillwater Planning Commission for October the 5th. I'd like to introduce two new planning commissioners this evening. Just starting on my far right over here, we have Steve Hallgren. Steve, do you want to say a couple of words about yourself?
Well, I'm pleased to be here this evening. I'm very eager to participate in the Planning Commission. I view it as a service opportunity. I have background that I think will contribute to working on the Planning Commission, and I'm very eager to participate.
Glad to have you here. And seated right next to Steve is Mark Prather.
Hello. I currently, my name's Mark Prather. I currently work at the Co-op, south of town a little bit, over the fiber broadband project. So getting that rolled out to people, that's actually a lot of fun. People are pretty glad to see us when we show up with fiber. Worked at FLIR, which was, it's now Teledyne, was FLIR, was ICX, started as Nomadix for 18 years prior to that. Same building the whole time, just different company names on the front. But lived in Stillwater since 1995, went to school here at Oklahoma State. Love Stillwater. I've traveled a lot, but I always love coming home. And so I'd like to participate in just, you know, whatever I can do to help the community. So I've seen a lot of places, a lot of ways other communities do things, both in the U.S. and internationally, so maybe that'll help some.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll get into the next item on the agenda, which is miscellaneous items for the Commission for Discussion and Possible Action, and that is election of a chair and a vice chair. Do I hear any motions or nomination?
I would like to, with my mic side, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Gina Phillips as chairman.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a chair. We'll now take a vote. Are we doing a roll call?
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to zero. Next item would be election of a vice chair. Do I hear any motions?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Brett Alred for vice chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll now proceed to vote.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Alred? Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes for zero. All right, moving into the public hearings, the format for public hearings this evening, we will call the items that are on the agenda. The Commission will hear staff's report first, and then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or those in opposition for their request. We'll have those in favor go first. When you come to the podium, if you would please clearly state your name and address for the record, and then after all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed, and then we'll hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. So with that, the first public hearing that we have. Thank you, Mr. Harkins.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Commission, Ryan Harkins, Community Development, this is a map amendment request to rezone from RMI and O Office to CS Commercial Shopping. Subject area or the subject properties are in the hatch pattern on the screen in front of you. This is also a map that's attached with the staff report in your packet. Subject areas are in the purple hatch. So you can see Sixth Avenue, as well as McFarland. You can also see Willis and Westwood Elementary School to the north. This is an aerial view with the subject properties inside the red polygon. So this would be looking north across Sixth Avenue. This is an older aerial before the new Westwood Elementary was developed, but it still illustrates the site location. This is a street view of the subject properties. So here, of course, we'll be looking from Sixth onto the subject site. Current zoning map shows office on the property at Sixth and McFarland at the intersection, and the property to the south to be zoned RMI. Again, subject properties are inside the black hatch pattern. You can see Office, RT, which is residential two family, as well as the public zoning, RSS surrounding that area as well. Future land use map illustrates commercial along the Sixth Avenue corridor in this part of the community. Sixth Avenue obviously being a spine and a major arterial. This is a close-up of that area from the future land use map, again, indicating that desired future land use being commercial at that subject property. Questions of staff before the public hearing opens?
Thank you, Mr. Harkins.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing. So if there's anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the item, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owners tonight. As Ryan mentioned, Sixth Avenue is a natural commercial corridor. There are CG properties, a block and a half to the west, which have the higher densities and higher allowed uses. The RT zoning district, that is to the west of this property, is buffered by a large drainage channel along the shared property line. To the east is the doctor's office, which probably has a higher traffic count volume than most retail places. The neighbors to the south have already been accustomed to the fence along the south property line, and the homes in the immediate vicinity to the south are not owner occupied. The homes to the south have already created a buffer to the commercial zone along Sixth Avenue. I know I can't speak to what is planned for this property, but I will note that due to the proximity of the school across the street, a dispensary would not be allowed. The two properties have been used in conjunction for some time in order for this commercial corridor along Sixth Avenue to happen. As is expected in the comprehensive plan, some extensions to the existing commercial properties in the area are going to have to happen. Do you have any questions for me?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak in opposition of the Seeing none, I'll invite staff to come back and give us their closing remarks and recommend alternatives.
Sure. Happy to. So currently, under the zoning code, part of the Land Development Code, map amendments are the process used to accomplish rezoning. At the present time, the proposed commercial shopping zoning district is not located on an adjacent property, so it would not be an extension of that zoning district. The closest commercial zoning is CG, general commercial, and that would be two blocks to the west. Comprehensive plan, however, on the future land use element does call for commercial to be established as the primary land use on this part of Sixth Avenue. Having said that, your alternatives are to accept the findings and recommend approval as requested. You can find this request as not appropriate and recommend denial to the City Council, or you can table the item to a date certain if you feel additional discussion or information is needed at the present time. Other questions of staff?
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion?
Well, I'm very familiar with this area, having lived in that neighborhood for 10 years. And we should always be cognizant of any potential impact on the residential areas, but as noted by staff, this is, the plan for this is a commercial corridor, commercial and office corridor, which most of it has transitioned to. I don't think that there'll be any major impacts to the residential area as a result of this. I didn't hear any comments from any neighbors, so I'm assuming that there's not a concern there, or at least it hadn't been articulated.
Other discussion or comments?
Am I correct to understand that as far as traffic, the assessment was that the traffic won't be any greater than the traffic already generated by the medical offices to the east of this? I ask the question because it's across the street from the elementary school.
Elementary school. Sir, staff, would you like to come back and respond to that?
Actually, staff is going to defer because that's not something we've studied as far as a traffic impact of any potential rezoning, as far as changing the traffic volume. I can tell you that that's something the consultant may have looked at as far as the applicant's agent, but that's not something staff studied in review of this proposal.
All right. I'll offer that typically what's thought about is that if you've got a medical office, you've got a pretty quick changeover of traffic, people coming for appointments and such. And so quite often, that's often considered to be a higher traffic turnover than just general shopping.
The comment was made about it not being allowed to be a dispensary. What actually ensures that?
I'll defer to staff, Mr. Harkins.
Sure. So under the laws for medical marijuana dispensaries, when an applicant submits their paperwork for review by the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority, one of the things they look at is, is this at least 1,000 feet from any public school? So being across the street would prohibit that from being an establishment that could be going into a new development there.
I would like to ask, are there any other exclusions that would apply? How many first things that come to mind might be a liquor store?
There aren't specifically that I can think of. Legal counsel may be able to answer that question.
I believe it's 300 feet for a liquor store to be located within a distance from a school or a church. I don't know how many feet there are between this location and the school, though.
The school property would be a lot closer than 200 feet, in fact, probably closer than 200 feet to the front door of the school, so that would probably apply here, too.
That is a possibility. Overall, staff looks at more of, is the zoning request appropriate, not specific uses? If there are uses that are regulated by other laws, either on the local or state level, those would obviously be applicable, depending on particular businesses involved.
Madam Chair, without objection, I move that we accept the findings and recommend the City Council approve proposed map amended as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. We'll now vote.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Alred?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Hallgren?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to one. Next item on the agenda is, let's see, map amendment MA 21-12, requesting review and approval to rezone a current RSS to CS at property addressed as 847 West Eskridge. Mr. Harkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, this is a map amendment request along Eskridge and Washington to rezone from RSS, small lot, single family, to commercial shopping. The subject property in question is in the purple hatch pattern. You can see it's essentially across from Will Rogers Elementary on the east side of The subject property is here in this aerial inside the yellow polygon. It is probably essentially this long rectangle that runs north-south. You can see Eskridge, as well as Washington and the elementary school. This is a street view of the subject property. A little bit farther back, so you can see parts of the baseball stadium and part of the OSU campus. Another street view. And then this is the zoning map of that area. So you can see the RSS surrounding the subject property. You can see the subject property inside of the black hatch pattern, as well as the school, which is zoned public, and then large lot, single family to the west on the west side of Washington. This is the future land use element of the comprehensive plan. It designates actually this area as part of the Oklahoma State University expansion and future campus setting. This is a close-up of that area, as well as indicating the subject property inside the black hatch pattern. With that said, questions of staff? Thank you.
Okay. You have a question?
I do have a question, just more specifically for the record. Under applicable city plans and policies on page two of two, first paragraph, last sentence, low-density residential use is called for to the west across Western Street, assuming that should be Washington Street instead of Washington.
It should be Washington, yes.
For the record, to make sure that that's.
Yes, it should be.
Good catch. Okay, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the item?
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owner tonight. This site is lending itself more and more to a corner commercial property with the way OSU Athletics has grown up around it, and the traffic along Washington maintaining as a single-family home on this property is unlikely. I would like to just bring up staff's map. There we go. Subject site is here in black. The orange all along the south is now university, so that's college. So you can see that commercial is in red, so the commercial is just on the other side of both the public school and the university. So just an additional commercial development on this corner. As with the previous property, due to the proximity of the school across the street, again, a dispensary would not be allowed in this location. Any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Why is, why was it not included in the university? Why did it never become university property?
I have no idea.
There's no evidence to why, or that's not, maybe it's not pertinent?
Yeah, I don't know. I believe the owners that currently own it were not the owners when the university was buying property.
What kind of commercial interest has there been in this property?
Through my office, there's been quite a bit. What's never been settled, and so this client has proposed a rezoning, instead of trying to make something work in the existing zoning classification.
Any other questions?
Do I understand correctly that the long-term plan is university?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, the comprehensive plan hasn't been updated in quite a while, and so that's why the map doesn't quite reflect what's going on now. So I don't know how that would be updated, if it were to be updated now. So since it's kind of not correct to begin with, we're going with how the neighborhood and surrounding areas have developed.
Any other questions from Mrs. Harris? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak in opposition for this item? State your name and address for the record, please.
Gina Hellman, 902 West Eskridge. I am probably the property, my husband and I are probably the property most impacted by this. We live just across Washington from this. If you know that neighborhood at all, you know that it has been a beautiful residential neighborhood for a long time. We are definitely getting more rentals, but there are still lots of families, lots of small children. The proximity to the school is a real selling point for people to move there, and it's hard for us to imagine any kind of commercial endeavor on that property that could add value to our properties and to living in that neighborhood. We have concerns about parking, we have concerns about traffic, all the things that you would expect with any kind of commercial development. And, you know, I was very glad to hear you can't put a dispensary there, hopefully you couldn't put a liquor store there. Those are definitely positives. But we're opposed to this because we already have OSU pretty much up to our doorstep. And to maintain the neighborhood the way it is, I don't think putting a commercial property there would help at all. So, yeah. Anything else?
All right. Any questions from the Commission?
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition?
My name is Shelby Cypress, 1324 North Washington. We live just a little north. I have concerns, just because I've heard many things when they very first, if I could address your question first, the lady that lived there, she's an elderly lady, she built a house in Tulsa and moved. It was her childhood home, and she lived there until the owners bought it a little over a year ago. And she did, she offered that land to Mike Holder at a very healthy price of $650,000. And he said he did not want that for a parking lot, he didn't want to pay that for a parking lot. And so the new owners bought it for that in one day. That is from Ann, who told me that, is how I know that. And this last year, they let students live in it. The house looks awful. Grass up to your knees. She had an immaculate lawn. It's two lots instead of one single lot. And originally, I believe they were going to build on the second part of the lot that is closest to the baseball field, places for people to rent for game day, and that was the original. Now I'm hearing that they are talking about opening for game day only, possibly a winery. But my concern is, and it is right across the street from the school, and I don't know if you measure from the front door of the school to the front door of the house, because there is the parking lot that goes with the school, and so that would take up space. And then the second part of the lot, there's more space, so I don't know if the, say 300 feet would count because of the parking lot included. And also my concern, and I don't think I speak for myself, I think I speak for everyone here, is that them saying they want to do it for game day, and then for special events, and then for, this is going great, let's have a winery in the neighborhood. And it is across the street from a school, and I just don't think with children. And there's children in the neighborhood as well. So that is my concern. And from the picture, I couldn't tell, it was an old picture, because there was the red image of something, it might have been closer to the, was it the circle at the end of Washington where you turn onto Boomer, the red square?
That was the aerial looking north along Washington.
Okay, so it was. So that's up where the Mexican restaurant is and the liquor store where you turn onto Boomer. That's way past the president's home, the new home they're building, and then there's two other housing additions and a nursing home there. So it's quite a bit further up, so, and it's not close to them, so.
Any questions? Did I cover it all? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Trevor Fields in, 1024 Westville Rogers Drive. And I guess the whole story is that when OSU decided to develop that as a baseball field, the resident fought with them to leave that house. There was kind of a buffer between the baseball field and the school and the neighborhood, and it was left there, and of course she got older, and the theory was that OSU was going to buy that when she either passed away or moved out, and I guess Mike Holder didn't want to agree to that price, and so they bought the property there. And from the photographs there, I don't think they really depict the area. I think those photographs were taken at the worst possible time, because if you actually drive past that house in the spring or the summer, it's a really nice property. I mean, apart from the students that have been there, but that's a different story. If you look around from that house, you will see a church across the street just south of there, and then residential properties all the way along there. And there's no residential, there's no commercial property all the way down to the end of the street there where the Golden Corral used to be years ago. That is a big open lot if you want to build a commercial property there. Now, on their pictures there, they showed the map. What they didn't show, just at the bottom end of the school there, there's a whole row of new residential houses there that have been built. And there's also a residential house on Eskridge just by the front of the school there. So I'm an educator, and to have a commercial retail outlet just there, 25 feet at the most from a field where kids play soccer, the ball goes over the fence, kids are running backwards and forwards to increase that amount of traffic, is just ridiculous. Now, both my kids went to that school, they walked down the hill every day, crossed that street to go to Will Rogers. And with the increased traffic going to a commercial outlet there on the corner, you know, there's still kids in the neighborhood that walk down the street and cross the road every day. There's a traffic light there, people still go through the traffic light. If they're pulling out of a commercial property there, who knows what's going to happen? So in the summer, because I live in the neighborhood, the church here brings about 50 to 100 kids, they walk along Washington here, they cross the street, and they go to the school there for school lunches. You're going to increase the amount of traffic on there, and, you know, do we need this in our neighborhood? That's an established neighborhood, there's still There's still a lot of individual people live there. We lived there for 30 years, and we lived with the baseball stadium. You know, that's far enough that, you know, I could live with game days, football game days, they all park on our street. The people are really nice, but they're not buying beer at the bottom of the street there, and then throwing the beer cans in the yard, which occasionally happens. But if you increase that commercial property there, who knows what's going to happen? Our property values will go down. And like I said, there's no other commercial property within 500 feet or half a mile of our house. So I'd appreciate it if you'd consider our request to deny this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Hi, Sarah Henson, 1310 North Washington Street. And I just want to be a representative for the neighborhood of someone with children in the neighborhood. We walk across the street frequently. We're always riding bikes around there, walking our dog around there. We've actually enjoyed the baseball stadium being there. It's just an area we can run around and play in, and the field's over there. And they've, the baseball stadium, I feel like, has actually added to the beauty of the neighborhood. So I would just encourage you to keep our neighborhood beautiful, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? State your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Hellman. I live literally west, across the street from that house. And Ann Williams has been a friend, and actually, her father was. It was his house.
Could you move a little closer to the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Could you give us your address again?
902 West Eskridge.
Thank you.
Avenue, yeah. Lived there 25 years. When I first moved there, I never dreamed the university would come 10 blocks to our house. Okay? And the story behind that, I can't remember her name. She basically said nobody would buy that house because of OSU around there. That's not really true, because they put that house on the market, and it wasn't on there for a few hours. And they called and said, "Ann, take down that sign. We want your house." She says, "You don't know what we're asking for my house. We don't care." So I'm just wanting to tell you that it could be a residential, again. It's a beautiful house. I'm definitely, as a minister, I'm concerned about alcohol. I'm concerned about cannabis. I don't know the rules as far as how far dispensary has to be from there. I don't know the rules. But what I understand is, is if you approve this, then they can pretty much do what they want. Is that true? Okay.
It would be the uses that are by right in that area. And as far as marijuana sales, believe that that's already been addressed, that it's too close to the school to allow that.
Is it really? Because I didn't, I heard that, but I don't know for sure. I see dispensaries going on. There are more dispensaries in Stillwater than I know, I see in Tulsa, it seems like. It's just crazy. And so what I'm concerned about, and I think our friends are, there's no commercial around there at all. And I think what they did, they bought that house to use it, then they were going to build some stuff. And they've changed things, and COVID's come along. But I'd like to see a little more, how would I put this? I would like to see a little bit more management of that, to know what's going to be there when they've got a grade school right across there and a residential area that's been a beautiful place there for, ever since we've been there. And I am concerned about, that's true, there are little kids that go up all the time during the summer and during the year. And it's a beautiful home. I wish the university would use it for some, as a gateway for them. That makes sense. It's part of the university. It's right there. Maybe Dean could live there, or, you know what I mean, or something along the lines. But I just, I'm definitely against it because of the lack of control over what will actually go there and affect our neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name's Chet Summers. I'm 1202 Lincoln. Just want to echo some of my neighbors' concerns, that we don't know at this point what it could turn into. I can tell you, we're California transplants. We've been in the area about five years. I never expected to see a $75 million baseball stadium. We're in the shadow of that. Not too many years after that, we've got a 10-foot fence that's completely blocking our view, you know, along to the west. We've had to deal kind of with working with that and working with the school. So, okay, so things change around here. I understand, you know, it's a little different. But the concern about the dispensaries, just kind of an observation, you probably have more dispensaries in this little town than we have in all of Fresno County. And it's, the weed's been legal there for a lot longer. That isn't the only thing. It's really, the school is there. Our kids have been blessed with the schools here, you know, in Stillwater. And we're all over the neighborhood. And we finally moved to a place where we could have the kids come to our house and not be afraid of leaving their bikes and stuff, you know, on the lawn. So we have all kinds of kids from the neighborhood coming around. It's been a good move. But we're starting to see things just kind of around in town where things are, we know they're changing. We know the city wants to grow. We want to hit that 50,000-person mark sustained, and there's all kinds of benefits apparently there. That area, that whole pocket neighborhood, we're very fortunate to have that. We were lucky to find it, to live there. But the character will change. If any type of retail or commercial establishment built there, first off, if they destroy that home, which I agree is an historic home, and I think it, I like the idea of turning that into some type of a welcome center, or a guest house, or something for the university, because it's been there so long, and because this is the character, and those of us who remember what it looked like and the beauty of that area there, kind of ties everything together. I don't know. But it's, I'm not saying it's just a fear of the unknown, what's going to happen, but I, even when we're eventually moved on, if we do, I'm concerned with the changing and the loss of that character, that neighborhood. We've managed to weather a lot of tailgates and things that happened in the neighborhood. But by and large, the character is still there. It's a safe place. It's a beautiful place. That's really our concern, that that's disregarded, and then there's something there that we don't really have any control over, and that it may not really add to the value of our homes, and may not improve certainly. I can't see it improving the safety of our area. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Thing is, that we've heard from about everyone in the room. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Staff could come back and present alternatives or address any of the questions posed.
Sure. So the one issue that came up in the course of the public hearing, again, was the idea of dispensaries. Just to reiterate for the record, dispensaries are not allowed within 1,000 feet of a public school. So that is one use that could not be allowed. Also, I would remind the Commissioners that dispensaries are only allowed with a specific use permit, so that is a separate process, not just through a MAP amendment. The Land Development Code is the, allows rezoning through this MAP amendment process. Each zoning district has a set of permitted uses that are allowed. If there are other applicable, as we mentioned, with regard to, say, liquor stores, there are specific licensing requirements that those groups would have to meet, aside from what the zoning code allows as a permitted use in that location. The CS zoning district is definitely not located at this location or close by. Staff would note that CG is the closest commercial zoning district. That's two blocks to the east along Boomer Road. Comprehensive plan, when it was established in 2013, established on the future land use element to have OSU or university in this area because of what they, at the time, saw as potential expansion. Having said that, in terms of alternatives at your disposal, you can accept findings and recommend approval as requested. You can find that this request is not appropriate and recommend denial. If you feel there's additional discussion that needs to happen or additional information that you need, you can table the item to a date certain as well. Questions of staff?
Commissioners? Please.
In your description, it says the area proposed for rezoning mix of public university, single-family, residential properties. It's RSS zoning located to the south and east. Is that right? The south and east is a big parking lot.
Would have been the zoning at the time. I can pull that map back up. So, even though it's, may be owned by the university, the zoning for our, that we showed on the map here, for example, shows RSS around this subject property on the south and east side.
So it doesn't help us very much?
It shows, so that's small lot, single family. So that would be like a 5,000-square-foot lot. Large lot, single family would be to the west, on the west side of Washington.
Okay.
Those are larger lot, single family. And then the public zoning would be to the north, which is the school.
But RSS is parking lot, and it's never going to be RSS again. And they're not going to put it down.
I think that that's part of the applicant's justification for their request.
Okay. So if it, to continue that, if it had actually been sold to the university, it would be a parking lot, most likely.
Yes.
Because it's a parking lot everywhere else out there.
That is a distinct possibility. That would also give the university, if they chose to ask for a change of zoning to university zoning district, zoning instead of the RSS, if they desired it.
So they, that would mean they could condemn it, then?
Rezoning to that has, is not necessarily the same as condemning a property. Those are separate processes.
It seems to me the university just stopped trying to get the property, so that's not likely to happen again, or is that...
That would be speculative on my part to try and answer.
We can't really address that. So it's, it doesn't seem likely the university will go after it, because they've kind of calmed down in all their activities around there.
That is not something staff knows at this time.
Could I have another question?
Sure.
I don't know if this is in your purview to answer, but what is the likelihood of that piece of property ever being viable as RSS, the little chunk that's left?
So the bigger question you're, I think you're trying to get to is, is it viable to be a residential property?
Right, yeah.
Obviously, it has been for the last year, at least as a rental unit for residential.
And that's one year, right?
One year. Could it go back to that? It certainly could if someone wanted to do that. Whether or not they chose to would be up to that individual property owner. That's not something the city would have a lot of purview to try and push one direction or another.
I think that's really what our job is here as the Commission, is to look at these proposals and requests that are brought before the Commission and to discuss amongst this group to really make that assessment as a recommendation that then goes on to the City Council.
That was a concern. Is it possibly, is it viable as residential or not?
I think that would be, that would be something we could discuss as a Commission here in the open meeting, is what we think that likelihood is.
I think the main issue we discuss is the impact of rezoning this to the vicinity. That's what the question is. Not whether it's viable to continue residential or be speculative, because we don't know. So it's whether or not the request impacts the surrounding vicinity is the question.
So we're limited to that, you think?
That is what you're denying would be based upon. If you were to deny it, it would be based upon the impacts, the negative impacts to surrounding vicinity. Or you can find that there is not, and you can approve the amendment, or table the matter.
Well, I drove around, I've driven around that a lot, lived here 30 years and seen it, and saw the change that went on. And right now, those photos didn't do it justice as far as green space. It's a magnificent lot with large trees on it. It offers a tremendous buffer to that entire community over there, to the west. It's essentially a buffer between that community and the, what is that? That's probably 100 acres of parking lot and a football stadium, or baseball stadium, sorry. So that is, to my mind, something that would enter into the decision is, does the city, what's the best, you know, are we, should we be concerned about that buffer to the residential community to the west? If it goes commercial, they can do anything they want with it, short of bombing it. I mean, they can cut all the trees down and make a parking lot. They won't put a dispensary. There, no one's going to let them put a dispensary or a liquor store there, that's for sure, whether they want to or not. But they could do anything else to it, and it would no longer be a buffer. Now, I don't know if it could, well, there's some comments.
I think when you look at development, and, correct me, someone correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that we have anything here in the city of Stillwater that takes into account the caliber of tree that's on the site. So if it were to be redeveloped, there's no, whether it stays in the current zoning of residential or it goes to commercial shopping, to CS, there's nothing that the city could do to dictate that the trees would remain or that they would be replaced if they were removed.
You're asking, you're posing that as a question, you say?
No, it's not a question.
Oh.
I asked if, if I'm saying something wrong. Okay, so.
Well, I'm...
There is a chart in the packet. I don't know if you're seeing the chart, the zoning comparison chart?
What's allowed?
Well, not even reading it, after seeing all the other construction go on around Stillwater, I doubt there's anything to protect trees. Because when they want to go, when a lot is sold for just about anything, the trees disappear immediately. Even when they change Westwood from the old school to the new school, there are lots of big trees that just, I don't know why, I don't think the city has any means of protecting those trees.
Correct. So to your question about a buffer, so I think the question would be, is a residential use the buffer that you would be supposing?
Maybe, but I guess it's also true that, you know, not all residential ends up being the same either, because a residential, some residentials don't look great either.
Correct.
Or even rental, so. Keeping it residential doesn't guarantee that it's going to stay a buffer, but, yeah. But that's a good point. I mean, all those things should be taken into consideration. Because if it changed hand as a residential, the new resident could decide they want to get rid of all the trees and do something else there. And it wouldn't be quite, quite the attractive site that it is right now.
Other thoughts?
If the current owners wanted to turn it into an Airbnb, would they be able to do that with how it's zoned now?
Without rezoning, could they do an Airbnb? Yes, if they had the appropriate permit, yes.
Thank you. I'm curious, because I'll just offer up, when looking at this particular request, my perception, having spent over four decades living in Stillwater, growing up here, my sense is that Washington feels more like a division, that it's really kind of a natural barrier for the residential that is on the west side, as opposed to the school and what's on the east side. The light there helps control for pedestrian traffic. I'm just curious what the other Commissioners would think about, does the street feel like it's a barrier? Is it perceived as a barrier?
You mean a barrier to protect the residential area?
A physical... A physical barrier in that, in that one side feels a certain way and the other side would feel like it's a certain, a different way, that it separated?
Well, certainly.
Separation.
Since they put the parking lot in, that's true. But if you go north of the school, then it's residential both sides, so there's really... It would, that, it's, in a way, maybe the, it's a four-lane street there, so it does provide somewhat of a buffer of its own. And I doubt that that street's going, I don't think the city has any idea of changing that street from four lanes.
I would be surprised that the street's a, used as a, it's a collector, major traffic way, so I don't see that changing.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Phillips. I think Washington, over time, has become a minor collector, if that's even a real term in traffic. But I think there's been increased traffic flow. So I think it does serve as a type of buffer to the, any impact on the west side of Washington. Just as the school has been a buffer to the north also. I hate seeing any losing residential structures, which in this town we're short of for reasonable housing costs. But we all know that, over time, that much of that residential close to the college is becoming rental and has become rental. Now, the quality of that rental housing varies, you were alluding to that. So I, I don't know that this one property is involved because it's residential. And I'm going to throw this out here because we're going to have this discussion with another impact on another neighborhood. Now, we can't, when we, if we agree to this commercial type of, excuse me, zoning, CS, dictate exactly what's going in on that property. But I think we need a new paradigm. I think we need to look at mixed-use neighborhoods. And mixed use means there's some commercial intrusion. I don't think commercial intrusion is in of a, in and of itself a priority, a bad thing if it serves the surrounding neighborhood. So I, I would hope we also take that in consideration, where having these debates about rezoning what has been residential of one form or another into a commercial property.
If I'm following you, Commissioner Shanahan, talking more about kind of a walkable community that would be some kind of commercial that could serve the residential areas, that would be more of a neighborhood commercial type use is something that you would find appealing?
Exactly. These debates that are ongoing about the 15-minute city, et cetera, so that's exactly what I'm referring to.
Kind of interesting, Stillwater, that mixed use is invoked a lot towards the center of the town, but not at the periphery. And I, I don't know, maybe commercial doesn't view the periphery to be viable for commercial.
I think that relates to.
In the center of town, everybody wants mixed, wants mixed use in the center of I mean, that doesn't diminish it, I would certainly give a opponent, mixed use has some great advantages. Could I bring up another point?
Sure.
Commercial can degrade residential. And so is there the possibility that this becoming commercial could degrade the residential to the other side of the street enough so that then there's going to be pressure for that to also become commercial?
I, I think that's an unknown.
There's no reason that commercial would decrease the property value on the other side of the street unless it's done poorly or, but the city hasn't really had much control over that. You know, a lousy business that goes out of, you know, goes bankrupt, this could happen anywhere.
Here any other thoughts or discussion from other commissioners or perhaps a motion?
Now, in the other discussion, I move, and without objection, I move that we find that this is not an appropriate use and do not recommend that the city council approve the map amendment.
I would second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Can you speak up what you could say?
I apologize. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I will repeat what I said. I said, without further discussion and without objection, I would like to make a motion that we find this is not an appropriate use and that we do not recommend to the city council approve, that they approve the map amendment, if I said that correctly.
So we had, we had a motion and a second, and the motion paraphrases to deny. With that, we'll vote.
Mrs. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Shanahan?
No.
Mr. Holgren? So if you approved your motion, you'd say yes.
So if I approve my motion, I'm saying yes?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Holgren?
Yes.
Motion passes three to two. All right. Next item on the agenda is subdivision exception, SEPC 21-01, request review and approval for an exception to the subdivision requirements in order to build retaining walls within the platted easements of certain lots in the Park Valley subdivision, section one.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Lance Gross, planning manager. And let's see, subdivision exceptions, they don't come along very often. And this one is located in Park Valley subdivision, section one. This is the first section to come in for this plat. It contains 58 lots for single family. And the location of this is south of 26th, and it's on the east side of Western. It's the purple hatch pattern on the map. This is an aerial view looking to the north. And it's actually on the southern portion of the yellow polygon. This is a view of southwestern and 26th. This is another view, looking, I believe, to the north.
Not to the east, I think that's looking east. That's looking east down 26th.
Well, this is southwestern here.
Well, that's southwest.
Yes.
Sorry. Okay.
And the subdivision exception request is to construct retaining walls within the easements. The request essentially is a variance to the subdivision regulations. And where you see the red areas highlighted, those are the actual retaining wall locations, which will be placed within the, the easements. And they're either located on the backside of the lots or in a couple of different locations, they, they run down the center between lots. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commissioner for staff?
So did anyone at the city look at these to see whether they're reasonable, I guess?
You mean?
You're just taking this as a suggestion by the developer that these are needed?
That, that is correct, yes. Yeah, and the applicant's representative, Chris Anderson, the engineer of record, is here, and he can ask, answer questions specifically about that.
Well, yeah.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Will open the public hearing, is there anyone present tonight that would like to speak in favor of the item?
Good evening, Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing developer. Interesting story on this. I've been an engineer for SMC since 1982, and we've worked with Ideal Homes, who's a developer on this project, oh, probably since the late 80s. So I've got a relationship with them at least 30 years long. And several years ago, they, they came up with what we call the, the swing set rule when we're doing grading for their neighborhoods. A lot of their neighborhoods are for young families, that's what their target market is with kids. And so we used to just kind of grade these out, steep as we could, just trying to, you know, conserve money, retaining walls cost money. But since they came up with what we call the swing set rule, which is, they want the backyards to be flat enough so that a family could come in and parents can install a swing set in their backyard, have a place for the kids to play. So they're really trying to build family-friendly communities. And so this site has some pretty good topographic relief across it. And so when we did the grading for the entire site, these were the areas where we needed retaining walls to maintain those flat backyards, to make livable, usable yards for the families. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from commissioners?
So you're saying the need for these retaining walls is more related to how residents may want to use their backyard than any sort of safety or land use concern?
Correct. Retaining walls, again, are to make, if you can imagine.
Right.
A slope.
Right.
And you've got a back, a house and a backyard, instead of having a steep backyard, we build the retaining walls at the back of the lot, so this guy has a flat yard and the guy down here has a flat yard. And there'll be fences along the retaining walls, they're obviously separating the yards.
And these retaining walls will be in the utility easements?
Yes, but I've been working with your engineering staff very diligently to make sure that we're providing actually additional easement. Their normal, normally we do a 10-foot and a 10-foot utility easement for a total of 20. But in these areas, we're doing a 20-foot easement on the lower end where the sanitary sewers are, and 10-foot on the upper side. So we're providing a total of 30-foot of utility easement to make, make that usable with utilities. And I've worked that out with your engineering staff. But the, the wall itself is actually on the property line, not out in an easement, if that makes sense.
So to clarify, the, the proposed wall locations are on, would be on the owner's property?
Yes, well, on the lot line between the properties.
So then, who would have ownership of them for here in maintenance?
I believe that would probably be the lot owner.
So it would be the lot owner's property?
Yes.
Okay, and then you mentioned fences on top of the retaining wall?
Yes.
Is that going to be the responsibility of the homeowner to build on top of the retaining wall, or is that something that is part of this retaining wall system that you're proposing?
Usually, the developer comes in and provides the rear yard fencing.
So usually, not sure, but more likely than not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I continue that? You said the retaining wall will be owned by the lot owner, but there's a lot below and a lot above. So which, which lot gets it? The one above or below?
I think it would probably be a joint ownership.
They'd have to join.
Yeah.
Okay. And these are, well, this might be outside our purview, but these are highly engineered, so they're not going to.
Yes, yes.
Need a lot of me.
Yeah, absolutely. We have, we have standards, we have to deal with.
Do you have an idea how high the retaining wall might be?
Most of these, I think the highest one was probably about five feet, most of them are in the range of three to about 13.
I do have another question. What, what would be the slope on these lots if there was not the retaining wall? So how great of a slope are we talking?
It kind of varies across the site. Some of these would probably be approaching 20% slope in the backyard, which is very steep.
And you're able to correct that with a low retaining wall of only four to five feet?
Yes. The lots are, the lots are fairly small, so it doesn't take much to get them out of balance.
Another question, but I mean, maybe outside our purview again, but do you, do you keep the topsoil separate so that you can put it back where it belongs instead of just mixing all this up?
No, generally, they, they will strip the site and then do the mass grading and then.
Put the topsoil back so that the yard is actually just not a bunch of.
Yeah, and then they, and then they come back and put soil on the yard, yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is probably, maybe speculative too, but it says the submitted and approved final plat for section one did not contain the proposed retaining walls. I guess I'm wondering if it had, is that, maybe that's an oversight, or if it had, is it likely that it would have been approved? I mean, is that something normal that?
We, all I can say, we, like I said, have been doing this for 30 years, and this is the first time I've ever had to come and ask for an exception for retaining walls. We put them in all over the place and have been doing it for a long time. So this is the first time I've been asked to do this, and, and we never show them on a, on a final plat, we show them on our grading plans that get turned in with the final plat that the engineering team reviews.
Okay.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the item? Seeing no one, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll invite staff back for questions or concerns posed and an alternative.
I can go through the findings. A special exception is required to amend the city code for subdivision. The special exception can be approved with or without conditions. Permanent structures are not permitted within a utility easement. Recommended, recommended conditions are available to protect the city. And here's what I'm going to do. Show you, our legal counsel, Beth Ann Childs, has provided us with her legal opinion, and there's a series of six conditions that you guys can look at and consider, and you can include these if you wish, one or all, whichever. But essentially, what it comes down to is, it's to protect the city. If these were allowed, it would make sure that everybody knows that if the city had to get in there to, you know, repair or maintain the sanitary sewer, the city would not be responsible for replacing those retaining walls. But there's a series of six conditions, so.
Do we have a copy of that?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in, it's also.
It's okay. It's, you approve with condition, you can approve, but in order to protect the city as you're saying, it would need to be approved with those conditions recommended by council.
Yeah, it's in your staff report, so.
And this is all for yours? We could do a connection.
Yes.
Ms. Payne, may I ask you a question, please? So, so, so this opinion is based on Beth Ann Childs' opinion?
Yes.
And this, and this can be contingent weak for all or some, so we can piecemeal it?
That's correct. You can base, you can approve with.
Exception one and two, but not three, four.
With all six of her conditions or not, that's up to you. But like I said, it's to protect the city because these are in our easements. So if we have to gain access, we would have to tear down potentially an expensive retaining wall. And this would allow us to do that with not us having to repair those at our expense, the city's expense.
So then that expense would fall on the homeowner?
Correct.
So it's kind of a buyer beware, in my opinion, of, of the lots. So it's, so if someone's putting an improvement on a property that you're purchasing, that you're responsible for, should the city need to get in to do utility work, and then you as the homeowner are going to be required to put it back in place?
At our expense, if you approve those conditions.
Mm-hmm, at the owner's expense. I mean, to me, to me, that seems more of a hardship on the owner than it does on the developer. That's just my, my thought. That's just my thoughts on this.
If we agreed to these, you know, maybe all six, is there any way that we could require that, or maybe it happens naturally, I don't know, that the buyer of the property is made aware that they've taken these on?
They would be made, I mean, they should be made aware, but there's a lot of times, as if you've ever bought a home, a lot of people don't even realize they have an HOA. They have a lot of paperwork in front of them.
Yeah.
I cannot guarantee that they would know or not know.
It would be an expensive surprise.
Can we ask what utilities might be in the easement in the back? Since that's changing around town.
The sewer utilities in the back?
Correct. Yeah, and there could be, you know, some of the private utilities as well for cable, but the city's utilities would be the sanitary sewer.
And that'll be in the back?
Correct.
It's always in the back? And is that the only one? So, the gas and electricity, well, electricity will be, is electricity below or above ground out there?
Yeah, probably have to defer to the engineer.
It'll be below, and the other utilities are going to be in the front of the houses. It's the sewer in the rear. And again, we've worked out with your city engineer to provide additional easement space for that work if it ever needs to take place.
Okay, sewer in the back, everything else in front?
Yes.
So, if they ever have to get back there, it's going to be deep, I don't know, well, at our house, it's 15 feet down. I don't know what that sewer's going to be out there, but...
Yeah, most of the places, it's probably 10 to 8 feet, 8 to 10 feet.
So, that retaining wall, if you're coming from above, could be something that would have to go, they'd have to go through it?
They'd have to come from the low side.
Yeah, they'd have to go through that.
That's where the sewer is going to be on the low side of the wall, and that's where the additional, that's where the 20-foot easement is instead of the 10-foot easement.
The sewer would be underneath that wall from the house. Each house will have a sewer underneath the wall.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have another question. What's the age of the sewer infrastructure? Is this going to be new?
Yeah, this is brand-new construction.
As it's laid, as it's in development?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, that's, that's, our house, it was 50 years before they had to do anything to it, and the New Orleans, but you know, it is a concern. If they ever had to tear that sewer up, that wall would have to go.
Question, and this is staffer to the engineer of record. Is the, was the 20-foot easement, was that in the initial plat, or is this something that's being asked for with the retaining wall exception?
This is an additional easement.
And that's only in these areas where the retaining walls are, or is it throughout the entire plat?
Just where the retaining walls are.
Discussion among commissioners?
I would like to seek legal guidance from Ms. Payne. Ms. Payne, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, it's reasonable to assume that this opinion was written by Beth Ann Childs?
Correct.
You are here speaking just as equally as Beth Ann Childs. Your opinion doesn't differ from...
No, it does not.
Are there any of these six conditional contingencies that you feel strongly about one way or another that we should take into...
I would take into all of them. I will tell you, she did quite a bit of research. So, you know, the general rule is structures are not allowed easements due to the city having access to sewer lines, for instance, right? And she did some research to see if other municipalities allowed exceptions to such. And most of them, if they had that, they had these six exceptions conditions as well. So, it wouldn't be abnormal for you all to require all six if you did approve this with conditions. But generally, most cities do not allow structures in easements, but the cities that do, she found, do require these conditions. If that makes any sense.
So, just to clarify, legal counsel is encouraging the planning commission to, if we accept, to include these 1 through 6?
Correct.
Thank you.
If I pose another question about the disposition of the, what is the likelihood of the sewer being underneath the retaining wall? There's 20 feet below the wall of easement and 10 feet above, and the sewer could be anywhere in that 30 feet.
It's not, it's not 30. I'll let the engineer explain it again.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Again, there's 10-foot of easement on the high side of the wall.
Okay.
We would normally just have 10-foot on the lower side or the other side of the yard. The city engineer asked for an additional 10 feet, so we've got 20 feet below the wall.
10 feet below and 10 feet above?
No, 10 feet above, 20 feet below.
Okay, so that's...
So, and that sewer is in the middle of that 20-foot easement.
Okay.
10 feet, at least 10 feet away from the wall.
So, it's a 30 feet total?
Yes.
For the easement? And it'll be in the lower 20 feet?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, and this, all this, as far, for me to completely, this only pertains to the city sewer, does not pertain to the hookup to the house? Doesn't, this doesn't have anything to do with the hooking up to the house? It only...
Right, this is, this is talking about the city-owned sewer?
The city-owned sewer, which is not...
It's not, it's not the private line, it's not under consideration?
So, the city-owned sewer that's going to be, that will not be under the retaining wall anywhere?
Well, but when you repair sewer line, it could cause damage to have access to the wall.
It's possible, but...
It is possible, and that's why we have this, so it protects the city. And if we hire subcontractors, it would cover them as well, that if they did damage it trying to gain access and repair, it would protect.
Well, I could see where it would provide protection to the city, but boy, the current technology, you don't have a, you don't need 20 feet to take up a sewer line.
So, if you're, if you're talking about deep, if you have to go down and get into a trench, you have to secure that backfill zone?
That wall, yeah.
And so, it can get deep pretty quick, or you have to go in and shore something up? So, just depending on the construction method, you know, maybe, maybe not, it just depends?
Well, I don't, I wouldn't object to these protections for the city. I'm just thinking of the likelihood of there being any, any activity back there that would need to invoke this, and it just seems to me, I agree the city should protect itself, but I don't think that it's going to really, it's really low likelihood of it ever happening.
I think I'm a little bit more thinking here back, if we look at the first page of the report, and you're looking at Section 23-64, talking about a substantial hardship for inequity. I think that's the thing that's kind of bothering me more, is to me, it feels like, as proposed, this is putting, I'm not seeing a substantial hardship for the developer as to why, why the retaining walls. And proposing them in the easement, it just seems that it's putting more of a hardship on the homeowner, in my opinion, the potential homeowner. And if these are truly lots for young families, kind of starter home types, or perhaps maybe those that are in retirement age, smaller families that are living there, might be less income to go in and do repairs. Those are kind of the things I'm looking at on this.
You're talking about paragraph that starts Section 23-64?
Right, I'm not seeing that the developer has proven a hardship, substantial hardship on the developer. If the homeowner comes in and is looking for a more flat lot to put a swing set on, then they may want to do something like that. And it just seems, it just seems kind of counterintuitive to me to have retaining walls in an easement period. I do think that the conditions that are, that are listed here for our consideration would certainly protect the city against, you know, risk. I guess the other question would be is if, if that retain, if those retaining walls, if for some reason retaining wall has to be removed for repair, then all of these same, would all of the same conditions still hold true if a homeowner wanted to do an installation back?
Yes, because a homeowner also, like you mentioned earlier, let's say if we didn't approve this and a homeowner wanted to come in and do the retaining wall themselves, that's not permitted. So, they would, this process would allow them to modify, if there was damage, to repair it. A homeowner is not allowed to go and build a structure in an easement either.
Oh, so the homeowner couldn't put a retaining wall in if they wanted one?
Not in the easement. Not in an easement.
It'd have to be back 10 feet or above, and, well, if there's no retaining wall in, that's going to say 10, 10. Is that correct? It'll be, if there's no retaining wall, what will the easement be?
Yeah, it would just be 10 and 10.
10 and 10, okay.
And again, the reason we put it on the lot line is if you put it outside of the easement, you would have, here on the high side, you would have an area of your yard that basically was inaccessible.
Right, 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 okay, I got it. The old easements were 10 feet, weren't they? But now they're 20 feet, I guess? That's a big, is that correct? The old easements were 10?
It's possible. The current code hasn't set for 20 feet, so...
Okay. Well, our neighborhood is 10, but...
Yeah.
Any other discussion from commissioners, or anyone would like to make a motion?
I would make the motion that the request be approved according to the, you might help me if I'm not making the motion correctly, but the motion to approve the request as it's stated in these documents here, including the six...
So, your motion is to approve the request with the six conditions as provided by legal counsel?
Okay, if that's the proper way, yes.
Okay.
Make a, make a motion to...
Do I hear a second?
I would second that motion.
Have a motion and a second? We will now vote.
Mrs. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Shanahan?
No.
Mr. Alred?
No.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Holgren?
Yes.
That was 3 to 2, denied? Motion failed.
And so now...
Okay, now, do, there another motion to consider?
Since that motion failed, another motion can be made, as your alternatives are provided, a motion can be made except to findings and recommend approval, basically without the conditions. You could approve the request with just certain of the conditions, not all listed, reject the findings and deny the exception, or table the item.
So, as chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move to reject findings and deny the special exception. Second?
Second.
For the motion and a second, we'll now vote.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Alred?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
No.
Mr. Holgren?
No.
Motion passes 3 to 2. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have meeting summaries for review and possible action.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Because we have new board members and previous members that were not present for all of these, I recommend that you maybe just make a motion to accept the summary minutes, not necessarily approve them, since you weren't here, but you could make a motion to accept them.
So, we'll start with the meeting summary for July 6. Do I hear any, are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move to accept the meeting minutes from July 6.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the meeting summary of July 6. We will now vote.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Alred?
Stand.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Holgren?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 4-0. The next item is the meeting summary for August 17. Are there any modifications or corrections to note?
Point of order, that vote was 4 to 0 to 1 abstention.
I'm sorry. 4 to 1 abstention. Meeting summary of August 17. Are there any corrections or modifications?
Without objection, move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the meeting summary of August 17.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Alred?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Holgren?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to the next item, the regular meeting summary of September 21. Are there any modifications or corrections to note?
Without objection, move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second? We will now vote.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Alred?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Holgren?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, city attorney for discussion and possible action. Our next planning commission meeting will be October 19. Any other items? Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Without objection, move to adjourn.
Second.
For motion and a second to adjourn, we will now vote.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Alred?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mr. Holgren?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. We stand adjourned.